Into kind of what the service standard will be for Spalding County. So for every one of these facilities, there is a recommendation of one per population category. So you can see kind of where NRPA is in their category. What Spalding County, the next column is what Spalding County has currently in 2025. And then the current level of service based on that number. Oh, you're okay. And then that last column actually is our recommendation for what Spalding County standard should be. So again, first column is what the national standard is, but again, it doesn't take into consideration Spalding County. It's history, it's everything. So we try to really make it unique and specific to the community. So that's why that far column kind of gives our recommendation, which is a little different from the national recommendation. And it takes into account what you already have and what we identify as maybe a gap in the Spalding County community. So I know that's a lot of numbers, but I wanted to break down the columns so it made sense to you. There are some things that obviously Spalding County does not have right now. And so you'll also see that reflected in the current level of service as well as the standards for Spalding County moving forward. The next slide is just a separate list of facilities. These are for indoor, so that first slide was outdoor, and this is indoor and structures. So same thing, that first column is the national standard. And they break the standards apart by, by population, obviously. And the second column is what's in the existing Spalding County inventory. And the third column is that level of service that's currently in place now. And then the 2025 recommendation is what we would request that Spalding County adopt as their standard level of service. The next slide is going to that far left column. I'll start and work my way across. So again, that first column is now what we just saw as the 2025 Spalding County level of service recommendation. You see in the next column, that's the existing 2025 supply. And then what the actual need is right now in 2025. And then you have a 2010, excuse me. You have a 2030 and a 2035. So this is a 10-year plan, so 2030, 2035. So it shows the needs. That far left column adds up all those needs as to how many of those facilities or amenities are needed over the next 10 years. And again, that's if that level of service is adopted.
Diamond Athletic Fields, that's a baseball and softball.
Yes, correct. And then the next slide, did you already go? Sorry. Okay, so this is the next one. This is reflecting on that indoor and structures chart that you saw. Again, that first column is our recommended level of service for Spalding County. Your standard, what we would call Spalding County standards. The 2025 supply, the 2025 need as of today. The 2030 need, 2035, and then that far right column shows how many, what the gap is to meet that standard level of service, if that standard level of service is adopted. Okay, so this gets into all of that public input, all of the inventory that we did. And then looking at that gap analysis I just showed you. We were asked to look at specific parks, facilities. There were about 10 different asks within our contract. And so basically, we went through, we met with staff, we took all the input that we had gathered and put these into concepts. And again, these are concepts, these are not plans, per se. This is what could be if this is what Spalding County wants to go with. But this is Blaylock Park, and we're calling it Blaylock Park. Obviously, right now, it's a fire station and it is a collection center. The staff is in the process of adding a launch on the site. And so basically, this would repurpose this area for additional uses. I know that the fire station, I believe, is going to be relocated. The collection center will be closing in the near future. And so we're calling this new building, which is the current fire station, the Flint River Center. This could be a multi-use facility that would allow events and activities during the day. It could be another place for seniors to gather during the day and have extra activities and programs on the west side of the county, which has been identified as kind of having a gap with facilities. And then it can also serve in the evenings and weekends as a gathering space for community events, birthday parties, family reunions, things like that, meetings. So again, that lists all the different amenities that would be on site. And again, this is just conceptual. We have gone through a review. High-level programming with steering committee and with staff who've gone through several iterations of these. So this is where we ended up after those conversations, so. But this is Blaylock and City Park. Obviously, you know, City Park gets a lot of attention, a lot of use. This allows for some improvements to be made at City Park. Again, these are all recommendations, these are all based on public input and those gaps that I just showed you. But they are just conceptual. So there's a lot of stuff that's recommended here. But so far, it's been very well received by the steering committee and by staff. Dundee Ballpark. So Dundee Ballpark has some limitations, some physical limitations. We've tried to address those and enhance the park by making it three fields to revamp some of the activities that have kind of been lacking a little bit for, in the way of adult programming. And then we've added some new amenities to the park as we reconfigure. We were able to add some new amenities for the youth as well. Obviously, if there are adults playing in the park, their families are probably going to come with them. So there needs to be some activities onsite for children to stay active and stay busy while the adult activities are going on on the field. This is Dundee Lake. So Dundee Lake, obviously, a beautiful, beautiful amenity here in Spalding County. This is just basically taking it and enhancing it, looking at what's already there and just enhancing it. I mean, and it's not trying to change it and trying to change its character. It's really trying to just enhance what's already there and give the public a little bit more opportunity to utilize it and be able to enjoy it. Green Valley. This one is kind of new, and some of you may be scratching your head going, what in the world? So obviously, we have the new aquatic center out in this area. We have the IDA out in this area. This is purely conceptual. Obviously, anything we do out there, we would want to make sure that we have the IDA onboard, that they are in agreement with any of the things that we're proposing. But basically, what we're trying to do is create a destination place, not just for the aquatic center, but for the surrounding area around the aquatic center. So this would include some trails, some picnic areas, opportunities to even expand the disc golf that's already out there, a viewing deck of the water, a small dog park, some boardwalks, actually, some new expanded parking areas. And then the old big, oh, sorry, the old big shanty cabin that's there is, our recommendation would be to renovate that and make it an event facility. That could be for, you know, wedding receptions, again, family reunions, birthday parties, things like that. And really create this to be a destination space. Again, conceptual, got to get the IDA onboard, but this is kind of our thoughts for the Green Valley area. Tyus, I remember when Tyus opened. I know that was a big deal. I think that was 1998, if I'm remembering correctly. But Tyus, again, not taking away from Tyus, wonderful park, wonderful amenity for the county. Just trying to take Tyus and enhance it a bit to add better circulation, better use, things like that. Nothing to take away for it at all, but adding some more gym stations, a nature center, a gathering space right there where you go into the soccer complex, just again, for more identity. Youth fishing opportunities, more pickleball, existing Ernie's Trail updates. Lakeside habitat restoration, again, just really enhancing the park, not really changing it, just looking at enhancements. And then space for additional programs, community gardens, dog parks, plaza with seating, picnic areas, parking under the trees, seating areas, and then a rain garden. And then this is the second part of Tyus, same thing, just enhancing the area. More pickleball, soccer-themed, oh, this is the one we just did, sorry. There's two for Tyus, I thought, but okay. It's okay. The Flint River Trail. So we have looked, obviously, south of Spalding. They've already done a lot of enhancements along the Flint River to give people access to meander along the river. This is, again, conceptual, trying to do those connections along the river and tying into the new boat launch, the kayak launch that the staff is working on now out at Blaylock. But these are some of the amenities that could be along the Flint River Trail, which would take it all the way down to the county line on the south end of the county. But some restrooms along the way, benches, maybe some archery, stations set up, kayak launch, dog walking, fishing, canoeing, picnic tables, picnic shelters, hiking, a nice overlook over the river, and then designated entry and exit points. This is something that came up a lot during the stakeholder interviews, is the connectivity from north to south, figuring out ways to expand trails, expand access. So we really looked at this for a really long time. I know there's been plans in the past. I think Griffin did a trail system that kind of never came to be. I know there was a railroad plan, a trail plan that came out years ago. We've kind of taken all of that feedback that we got from stakeholders and looking at those plans and came up with this north-south trail concept plan, which is divided into three phases, and I'll break these down a little smaller in just a second on the other slides. But you can see it starts all the way up on the north side and comes all the way down to Orchard Hill Park on the south side.
Said you're going to break this down?
I'm sorry?
You said you're going to break this down further?
Yeah, yes, so if you'll go to the next, there we go. All right, so phase one is the north-south trail concept. It starts up at Sunnyside and comes all the way down Quarry's Edge. And you can see it starts out, it shows Kilgore and it shows Old Atlanta, because I think Kilgore changes into Old Atlanta as you start getting down to the south side, almost to Quarry's Edge. But it would basically connect that amenity at Sunnyside all the way down to Quarry's Edge, and that would be phase one.
And this follows the railroad tracks?
Pretty much, yeah, yes. It runs perpendicular to that. That's why we kind of picked Kilgore. In talking with staff, there's plenty of right-of-way already available along Kilgore. So, okay, next slide. Okay, this is the middle section. This is coming through Griffin. Obviously, wanting to make sure there are safe connections to the main parks, community centers for people to be able to access without having to use their vehicle. So again, picking up at Quarry's Edge and moving across from Quarry's Edge over to Fairmont, and then Fairmont to Heritage Park.
What, what does it follow?
I'm sorry?
Like, what does that follow? There's no, there's not railroad tracks there.
Correct. So these are using existing roadways that we've identified as potential connection points. So we couldn't follow the railroad all the way through and connect all these amenities, all these facilities together.
So what, so what does it follow?
It's just following existing roadways that have right-of-way.
This area, we go from walking along, like in an area next to the railroad tracks, to just walking on the street?
Well, not on the street, next to the street.
Like in people's front yards, or, I mean?
Well, potentially, we're looking at which roads have right-of-way already available.
Do you think this is sidewalks, or do you think this is on grass?
Well, I mean, it's really up to you guys. Again, this is a concept. We can only take, we can only take the concept so far right now. Further study would have to be done. But this is what we've identified as realistic. Over and over, we've heard from the staff, like, we don't want a pie in the sky kind of idea. Like, we want something that's going to actually work for us. And so that's why this plan kind of looks like this, is-
Well, but that's, that's kind of what we're going to see tonight. So when you come and you say, we're going to go through this neighborhood like this, okay, why there? And what does that look like? I mean, again, next to the railroad tracks, there's a right-of-way, great, we put a path there, busy, I got it. What am I envisioning here?
Yeah.
Are they walking down the street, or are they walking on sidewalks?
And we can, we can show some images. We have images of what some of those will look like. But this is a high-level overview tonight, just an update of where we are. So you'll be getting final plans and documents later on as we move forward. So we, we just finalized these concepts in the last few weeks or so with staff, so.
An answer to your question, there are no sidewalks in two weeks.
I didn't, I didn't think so.
Yeah, this would be, this would be new connections that, that aren't already there, but utilizing roadways that would work for those new connections.
Don't get me wrong, I love the idea of connecting neighborhoods, pedestrian city style, with just like multi-use paths.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that's what your concept is or what.
And some of these, I believe, through some of these, there is still railroad connection there. There was a connection-
Yeah, from Fortified, most of Fortified is a railroad.
Yeah, that Joe looked at, that would create a really nice corridor along the railroad tracks that would allow for kind of an additional park amenity along that trail. And Joe has some concepts typed up for that, that I'm just not showing tonight. I'm just really trying to kind of high-level hit the path. But again, going from Fairmont down to Heritage, Heritage Park to the administration building, and then the senior center, and then taking it all the way over to Ambucks. So again, that would kind of, again, our, our number one priority is safety. So making sure that these are safe spots for people to be able to access and utilize to get to these facilities, so. And then there's one more phase, which takes it all the way down to Orchard Hill. And that's picking up at Ambucks and heading to Green Valley. And then from Green Valley all the way down to Orchard Hill. We're showing the roadways there, but if you see along South McDonough, it also shows the utility corridor. So rather than trying to, you know, South McDonough is pretty busy. But if we can't use the roadway there, trying to utilize that utility easement for that connection point to get all the way down to Orchard Hill. Okay, so again, that's a lot of information, and I feel like I've been talking forever, and you are probably ready for me to be quiet. But I just want to high-level hit next steps for you guys to expect. And that would be to review and finalize all of the plan recommendations, which we are putting all those all together right now and getting them prepared for staff's review. We also have another meeting coming up, again, on here, you'll see with the steering committee, steering committee, meeting number four. Review and finalize all the cost estimates. Obviously, with all these recommendations, there comes a cost. So we will break down all of these recommendations into OPCs for you guys to review. So you can plan out if you want to implement them all, when and how you're going to do that as far as funding goes. Review and finalize the draft report, again, that steering committee meeting that'll be coming up. And then the final BSC presentation and adoption by you guys. So a lot of information. We are rounding third, kind of heading for home. A lot of work's been done. It seems like a lot of stuff that I just downloaded, but there's a lot more that you didn't hear tonight that has transpired during the course of the last 11, 11 months or so. So I just want to, again, reiterate, it's been wonderful working with your staff. You have a fantastic staff. I don't think I'm telling you anything you don't already know. They are knowledgeable, they're hands-on, they're responsive. We work with a lot of communities, and sometimes it is really hard to get feedback from staff in a timely manner. And Megan and Kelly and TJ and Greg and just Robbie, the whole team, has been fantastic throughout this process. So we can't do what we need to do without their assistance, and they have been wonderful. So, but I'm happy to take any questions you have. Again, I know you'll have other items on the agenda. I don't want to monopolize the time, but I definitely wanted to bring you up to speed so you kind of know what you'll be seeing in the next couple of months, so.
Comments or questions on this? This is just an update on where we are. This is not for approval tonight or anything else.
I, I've spoken with a lot of the folks who live in my district that are concerned about the industrial corridor. And I told Ryan about this, we sort of have the thought bubble of down Arthur K. Bolton, we're requiring all those businesses that want to come in to hold a huge chunks of their area as green space. And the idea being, the, sort of the new idea being, what if they also gave us an easement in that green space that's not really affecting their thing, obviously, there, you know, that would let us sort of connect that with a trail that then hooks back into the Lakes of Green Valley? Again, that might be, you know, pie in the sky, you know what I mean, like? But right now, there's just a bunch of green space, but if we connected it-
Just like we're talking about with sidewalks everywhere else. We can talk about trying to set it up somewhere to be able to say, hey, this is what we want from you.
Well, it might be more of like just a nature trail as opposed to like-
Yeah, 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 but the same idea.
And then it hooks that into the Lakes of Green Valley's nature trail. So you could park there and then hike if you wanted to, you know? So not necessarily something that's big standout and, you know, it's not the Silver Comet Trail, but like, you know?
Yeah, still would be an amenity for that community, for sure.
So far, all of the property owners and developers that I've spoken to have said, yeah, that sounds doable. We sound like, we sound like we can do. Now, obviously, it's not going to look like this, it's going to look like this as it kind of goes around.
That's what walking trails are about.
But yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, they're not tracks.
Yeah, I just wanted to-
Yep, okay, I think that's an idea, okay. Anything else for Cindy?
Yeah, I'd like to just say, I mean, there's a lot of good stuff in there, but there's a lot of wishes and dreams and, and I could, I could foresee some, some government overreach like the Flint River Trail. You go over there and try to take a square inch from Charles Rooks. There's going to be some folks buried in a pasture, so I mean, I just, this is what I feel. I mean, that, that will never happen. I mean, that's just, that's just a concept, and that will never happen.
But at the same time, allowing for put-in and take-outs along the Flint would encourage more people to like kayak and canoe it as opposed to folks along the river thinking that it's their personal property because it's not.
There's some legality stuff going on with that right now in the capital and just been going on. So we probably need to kind of research it before we really start, start busting some champagne bottles out there.
All right, but if, if we, locals say this is navigable because we are putting these things in to make it navigable.
But you can't get out of the boat.
Right, 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 sure, yeah, yeah. The land is private, but the river, the river is not, and a lot of folks on those sides think it is and-
That's all part of what we're trying to get together, talk about. Cindy's pulling it together for us so that we can look at it and say, oh, hey, here's some thoughts. I think our big deal really and truly is going to be wants versus needs. In the end, this is a big fiscal issue for us, all right? Thank you, Cindy, we appreciate it. Plan on seeing you again later.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Next on the agenda this afternoon is a presentation of the FY26 Georgia Department of Corrections Capacity Agreement for the Spalding County Corrections Institute. And the great Warden Carl Humphries is here to present. Welcome.
Thanks, sir. I don't, I don't know much about a presentation, but I, I, I will be providing you with the updated contract from the Georgia Department of Corrections. Basically, the only change from last year to this year is the per diem increase from $24 per day per inmate to $30 per day per inmate. This, this agreement is for 225 inmates, and understand that there may be some adjustments to that either tonight, January, or whenever it may be.
All right, this is annual contract. We do this every year, same contract. We just made a couple changes to it, right?
That's correct.
All right, we're going to vote on this this evening? Any questions before we get ready to go to vote on it tonight?
This is specifically about the, the par down for-
No, this is just an annual-
This is the annual contract, and my question would be, do we need to make an annual contract for six months? Because if we are assured that we're going to change something in six months, then when are we going to be saying that?
It has a maximum capacity, not a minimum capacity in this agreement, so.
That is correct. If you looked at, if you look at number one on your screen, it says care and custody.
Up to?
Up to 225 state offenders daily. So this affords us the opportunity to make that adjustment.
Okay. I don't have any other-
All right, we're going to vote on this this evening, okay? All right, thank you, Warden. We appreciate that. We appreciate your conciseness, too. Next on the agenda is a presentation by Ms. Vicky Hennessy, our annual, our animal care and control director regarding the fee schedule update. Vicky, welcome back.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to stand before the Board of Commissioners this afternoon. I'm here today as the animal care director to have a discussion about two items. One is the proposed adoption and vet fees, and the other is an animal control fee schedule that is in our ordinance. The last time it was voted on was in 2018. Over the past year, we've seen a significant rise in costs associated with providing quality care and medical services to the animals in our shelter. This includes expenses for vaccinations, spaying and neutering, and other essential veterinarian treatments. To continue offering the highest standard of care and to ensure the sustainability of our operations, it's imperative that we adjust our fee schedules accordingly. The proposed fee increases are detailed in the attached adoption and vetting fee documents that were sent to you in your agenda packet. And these adjustments will help us cover the rising cost and maintain the level of service that our community expects and deserves. Any questions about the package?
I just want to make a comment before-
Yes, ma'am.
One of the bigger problems that I see, not only with this fee schedule, but, you know, planning and development or anyone else.
One of the things that I see that's a bigger problem with this fee schedule, as well as other departments that have it, is that each year, as the cost of living has gone up, this price has stayed the same. So, so whatever we do, we need to be able to account for cost of living, increased costs in these fees so that we're not waiting 20 years-
That's right.
-to go back and get in the situation we're in now where it's costing us all this money because we haven't kept up with inflation on those prices. That's, that's all.
And it's a huge change for the population. The citizens, all of a sudden, have been paying this number. And now they're, they're going to, they're swallowing, saying, oh, oh, what's this? So, yes, I agree with that. Incremental change is okay, they can handle that. But this big change that goes from, you know, a few dollars to a whole lot of dollars is-
I, I think very few people will go in and say, who are like, I'm going to get an animal, will be like, oh, it costs too much now. You know what I'm saying? And if you can't afford that, maybe, maybe a dog's not for you. I mean, dogs are expensive, you know what I'm saying?
Dogs are expensive in the end.
Vet bills are expensive. So, you know, this might be also a way to better vet potential owners. You know, if you can't afford six dogs, don't get six dogs.
Mr. Chairman, we are building into all the ordinances that we're updating a one-year calen, one calendar year change for fee schedules. It's just going to be a matter of making sure that that gets on an agenda on a regular basis every year so that those fee schedules do get updated or intentionally don't get updated.
And it's our intent to put that in with the budget.
I was going to say, that's the perfect time for it.
Yeah, simply because the, the January session is just too much to consider any addition to our fee schedule. And we need the fee schedule adjustment at budget time so we understand what the revenue source is going to be. I do want to highlight one thing, though. One of the things that, that Vicky and her team have done, they've gone out, and you saw this in your packet, they've gone out and done an analog study against all of the veterinarian clinics locally that highlighted what the vetting fees were for, for spay and neuter. And one of the things that, that Vicky did, she reached out to University of Georgia and did an analog study for them as well for spay and neuter. And the fee came back at 175. And one of the comments that, that was made by UGA was that is the low price for spay and neuter. And if you notice, the vetting fee for us on the screen here, it's at 140 for, for dogs one year old and puppies. And then for cats, it's 125. So our, our local veterinarian clinics are actually supporting the efforts that we are putting in front of them to bring the price down for our community as well. So kudos to them for the work that they're doing. Kudos to Vicky and her staff for putting this, this figure together for us.
Seriously, great work out there, Vicky. We've just been tickled pink with just everything. You're doing great. Thank you so much.
Those vets that do that, you know?
Absolutely. There is a need for us to do a thank you for the veterinarian clinics that are supporting our efforts. They are working very hard with us, so.
It doesn't cost us a whole lot.
It does not, and that's kudos to Vicky and the, the work that she's been doing to keep the relationships built with us veterinarian clinics. So thank you, Vicky.
Thank you, Vicky. We appreciate it. We're voting on that tonight.
That is correct.
Got questions, this is the time.
Oh, we're not done yet. There's, isn't there a bunch of pages here?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, but I want to make sure we, everybody understood, we're going to, go ahead.
I wanted to make sure that you had everything available. So what questions do you have? I wanted to make sure that you had everything available, so what questions do you have? I'm ready to try to answer those.
Okay, I I reviewed all of these and. I I hear what Jane's is saying, but we know that, that the demographics of this community is quite different than what the state of Georgia says in the census. And, um, we do have people, we have elderly people, we have single people. Who may want to have a dog, who may wanna have a pet, and. Two hundred dollars is a lot for them to come out of pocket with to pay, and and there's no such thing as a free dog, I'm, I'm, I'm the witness to that. They get you either before or after, but, um. And and I shared this with Vicky, it is a big jump, and I think what the result will be is that we'll have more dogs that. Will have to be utilized. And so, and that is not what we're aiming for. So while, while I look at these prices, and I would love to say, if we were able to do all of this, we could recoup the money that we spend. But we don't get a penny back from the fire department, we don't get a penny back from the sheriff's department, we don't get a penny back from nine-one-one. For those services that we provide, and in recreation, just started to help to equal out. So, in, in lieu of this, I mean, I, 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 don't under- misunderstand me, I appreciate the work that you've done. But I just feel like these numbers just need to be rehashed, I think they're too much for us to move at one time. I'd, I'd rather see us say, this year, this, this is a move that we're making over two years, or this is gonna happen over whatever period. Because as, as you said before, this is gonna be a lot for people to go from, you can get a pet for forty-five dollars and now it's two hundred dollars. And the whole purpose is, is for us to be able to put pets out in the community, because obviously, they serve the quality of life for a lot of people. But we don't wanna put them back out where they can make other animals, we wanna make sure that they're safe. Because all of the animals that come from us will be microchipped, so if they get picked up again, we know where they're supposed to be. And and then there are some basic requirements that if you pick a dog up, it doesn't matter what, where, where the situation is. If they come into our clinic and there's no paperwork, they have to have that basic, you can come in the building, medicine and treatment. You know, you have to be checked for Parvo or treated for Parvo, and you have to be dewormed and, and those kinds of things. Because we don't wanna create illness inside of our, our facility where we have lots of animals could be sick. So, so, no disrespect, I just think these numbers are too high for us to vote on. I, 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 I'd like for us to be able to help the community ease themselves into, into this. I would say, as, when I was a single parent and I was a single income, I'm living at East Griffin. I needed a dog, cause people walk in my yard, people walk through my yard to get to the store, if you have a dog, they don't. So we had it not only as a pet, it was for security for us, and I think there are many people in this community that do that. I, I really couldn't afford it, but I couldn't afford for nobody to steal my stuff either, so I'm just thinking, trying to think. Yeah, we want people to be responsible, you know, my biggest thing is stopping people from doing adoptions, which now that's what they're calling it. Pets for adoption, that just means pets for sale, because the state says you can't do that anymore.
Yep.
But if we don't, if we don't manage this, then people like me who maybe couldn't afford it. Will end up getting one of those adoption pets, who may be sick, who will end up i- out there with us anyway. Because people didn't take care of them, so just, I I would love to see us look at these numbers and figure out how we can say. This is where we're gonna go this year, this is where it is gonna be next year, and and set up a plan to where we can get to what the recommendation is from UGA.
Absolutely, might, might I say something briefly?
Sure.
Um, so two thousand seventeen Georgia State Code Title Four Animal Sterilization, um, we have to make sure these animals are sterilized. Within thirty days of sexual maturity, so I guess my question is, with what my budget is, who will be paying for that? If we don't pass that on to, um, our clients.
Yeah, one, one of the things to carry on, uh, Vicky's conversation, one of the things that we've noted inside of our ordinance is that the ordinance states very specifically. That those who are making adoptions will pay for the vetting fees. So we have worked, Vicky and her staff have worked very, very hard to get the vetting fees down from one seventy-five, which is what UGA is saying. Is the low cost down to one forty, so there's a thirty-five dollar reduction already there. Uh, so i- if you make a decision that we're gonna move, uh, lower than the vetting fee to move the animals out. We'll need to make some changes to our ordinance to accommodate.
Because that, that one forty-five ha- doesn't include the adoption fee, the adoption fee is an additional fee that goes to that.
That's great, that's the thirty-five dollars, so we, we could adjust the adoption fee.
So I, I, you know, I don't want us releasing pets that are not fixed to the general public. While I love people, they won't, that might not be the high priority when they, when they get the animal home. Um, I would love to be able to remain a no-kill shelter. Because I think, because of our, uh, past history, that we got a really bad reputation. Not just in our county, but in surrounding counties as being the killing shelter. Now, I get it, um, Steve has really worked with you on your prioritization and your triaging. And so you're managing to keep those numbers down.
Yes, ma'am.
But a lot of your cost has been based on us having a hundred animals or more that have been in, in our care. For civil offenses, so, so even if you just come up with, this is how many animals we can take care of. If somebody brings seventy-five cats or seventy-five dogs in, there's no budget for that. Now, I was under the impression that we had been budgeting twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars for a community spay-neuter to cover any animal. That came, are you saying that you no longer have that money in your budget?
So we went through that twenty-five thousand, uh, for the spay and neuter, and the vetting fee that you see here on the screen. At one forty for, uh, for dogs and puppies and one twenty-five for cats, that money actually goes back into that spay and neuter fund. Uh, but when you are spaying, neutering, what, eight hundred animals, uh, that, that figure goes very, very quickly.
You mean.
It, it was expended, that's correct.
So, so, and I, and I understand that, you had at one point a hundred and fifty-something dogs that were not, that were associated with criminal cases. We will have, if anytime that happens, we will have to eat that cost unless you're able to recoup through adjudication. Through the le- legal system.
We, we are able to recoup, but most of the time it isn't a payment plan, it is over time, several years, it's not immediate. Um, we do have other avenues such as grants, we are going to be trying to do sponsorships toward animals, um, all these different things. We just have, um, launched the Humane Society of Spalding County, we're waiting to get our five oh one C three paperwork, so that's awesome. That we'll be able to partner with that nonprofit to be able to assist us with spay and neuter fundraising. We just need to know what to do in the meantime with animals that are being adopted.
Please forgive me.
I'm sorry.
The, the grants and the sponsorships, uh, Vicky and I and Erica spoke again today about the sponsorship. So, um, someone can come in and sponsor a group of animals that, um. Someone who is unable to afford the vet fee or the adoption fee may be able to get, um. Sponsorship for that animal and choose a dog for free. Um, and and those are some of the things that Vicky and her team are really working hard for. Uh, to make sure that those who do come in, who would like to adopt a dog and just aren't financially able. Could do so for little or no funding.
So, so my, my concern is that, Steve, and I think that's an, an awesome program. My concern is that for the last three years, how long you been here? For the last three years, we have had at least one hundred dogs a year that come in under cri- uh, under civil.
Yes, ma'am.
Charges, we are not budgeting for that at all, and that is a problem. Because all of the resources that would have normally taken care of the amount of eighty or ninety dogs that we have went to that. And so, of course, you're gonna spend over your budget, but we didn't really know what your budget was because we really hadn't had anybody. Prior to four years that was doing a detailed budget of what the actual expenses are. So, so I don't, I don't wanna cripple you, but what I would like to see in a dashboard is that. For the last five years, we have, you know, not necessarily, we've taken in a thousand animals. We've adopted, you know, or whatever, because at one point, we were doing, we had some vehicle that would come here and regularly. Provide spay and neuter.
Yes, but it still costs money.
But what we were doing, where we were offering the scholarship, so instead of it costing you a hundred and fifty dollars, we were maybe helping to cover fifty or seventy-five.
Absolutely, over the years.
Which helped to offsee that, offset that cost, but once we started getting so many animals in the shelter. And the state law says that you cannot let them go back out un- unfe- unaltered or without the basic care. I, that's my concern, why would we think that we're not gonna have that this year, we've had it the last three or four years? So, to ask for this budget to match what we think we have in the shelter is not the same money. And so, and I don't think you're gonna be able, I, I don't want these fees to try to make up for the care of those one hundred or so animals. That ended up coming in because of they were there for a criminal case. And that's taken away from the care of the animals that we would normally expect to roll in and roll out.
Yes, ma'am, I agree with you completely, uh, and I think that's where the thirty-five dollar delta between the one seventy-five, what UGA is telling us. And the one forty that we're seeing on the screen, I think that's, uh, that's gonna make up that difference. Uh, because we are able through our service delivery strategy with the city to recoup a fair amount of the vet bills. That, uh, that were expended with respect to the criminal cases that came through the city. Uh, and with the adjudication and restitution fees that are coming in from, uh, from the county cases, very few, but a few. Um, both of those are a challenge for us because it is, the restitution takes time to get the, that money back in. Because it's all on payment plans, so taking a look at that, uh, factor plus the, uh, the difference between the one forty. And the one seventy-five, and then the number of dogs that, uh, and cats that we have coming through the shelter. I think we're in good position at the rate that Ms. Vicky is requesting and making recommendation for the vetting fees. Uh, to keep that number of twenty-five thousand dollars in the bu- uh, in the bank for spay and neuter for our facility. And be able to manage the number of dogs and cats that are coming through, and we are taking in quite a number of criminal cases.
Absolutely, we already have, um, uh, this year, this since January the first, we've already had forty-seven dogs. And twenty-six cats that were confiscated, and those people have, are, you know, misdemeanors or their felony cruelties.
And and one will not be, uh, relieved from custody until August?
August, yes, that is the city, uh, situation, all of our counties that have come in, within twenty-four hours, we already have the release of those animals. By doing what we need to do and working with, um, the solicitors and the, the DA, but I have no say-so over anything that happens within the city.
And and just for bedtime, um, for a, for a pet to stay in the facility, irrespective of veterinarian care. Uh, it's three dollars and sixty-seven cents a day per pet to stay in that facility. Uh, uh, that's the ra- uh, the ra- the rack rate, so i- if you, if you run the vet bills. Uh, plus any additional charges that the animals may obtain, um, you're talking six or seven bucks, um, a pet per day. And when we have a criminal case come in, it's taken sixty, seventy, ninety days before that pet is eligible for adoption. That's an expensive pet.
So, so, yeah, and and you may get animals that come in, generally when they come in like that, they're sick. So, what, what I'm, what I'm hearing, what I wanna make sure I'm hearing what you guys are saying, is that. Every time you adopt a pet out, that adoption fee goes back to support spay and neuter into an account to support.
The vet fee goes back in to support spay and neuter.
Okay, where does the adoption fee go?
The adoption fee comes back to the County General Fund to pay for the salaries and benefits for the employees.
So, but. So how come you don't have money in the spay and neuter fund? If all these animals that you've adopted in the course of the year.
There was a course of time that the vetting fees were not being charged.
The law enforcement, we don't, weren't going to law enforcement for that money, big time, and we were eating that stuff. We just have now started that.
Right, we started that in the last two months.
We have changed everything that we're doing out at the animal shelter.
Uh, I just wanna go on record as saying, I think that's, it's a lot, for one, I'm not gonna vote against it. If that's what the rest of the board wants, what I would like to do is reserve the right to be able to come back and find out. If this has changed how business is being done. Because I'm, 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 I'm gonna be looking to see if we're having more dog stumped, if we're not having as many adoptions. If people are, their pets are coming in, because I was really surprised at the amount, I would have thought that the fee that we charge for an unaltered pet. Would be much higher than two hundred dollars.
That is an absolute.
Because, part of our problem, and it is a problem in the state, is that people are having breeding animals and selling them on their own. Nobody's getting the income tax from it, and nobody is assured with that the animals are safe, they're clean, or that they're healthy. So, so, yeah.
That, that's one of the questions that Vicky had for the board this evening was, um, her, her recommendation was two hundred or two fifty. I believe it was.
It was two hundred, cause it used to be one hundred.
So, that in essence is, like I said, another, another discussion on there. Because also, while I was going back through the ordinances and looking at the changes and updated ordinances, there was an ordinance, uh, back in two thousand twenty-three. That also says there's a three hundred dollar registration fee for dangerous dogs, so we are finding a lot of things that we need to bring before you. Um, in different avenues to straighten this out because it's, in one part of the ordinance, it may say one thing and then on another part, it may.
So you're the one that designates an animal that's a dangerous animal, correct? How many do we have in the county?
How many do we have in our care with the county, we have zero, how many do I have right now in the care of the city, I have two.
Right, but I'm not, not just in your facility, I'm saying if someone, if you have an interaction, you or whoever, has an interaction with a dangerous dog. Do we allow that animal to go back to its owner?
So, what I have started, I'm gonna be quite honest with you, there was, uh, no files, no folders, no information about dangerous dogs. But I have a book, something like this, that has all of our bot cases in it, so if the bot case comes up again, it becomes a dangerous dog. And then we'll be going from there because I've not had one of a da- dangerous dog since, um, we've been here in the county.
So, is it three hundred dollars to take the dangerous dog back, or three hundred dollars to get the dog back?
Register it, it was, um, signed, I guess when Ms. Rita was, was here, um, and it was talking about registering the animal. So if someone moves into this county with a dangerous dog, they're supposed to register their animal.
But how do they know that?
Exactly, how does anyone know that without going through, so there needs to be a little bit more clarification in our ordinances.
And a fine for not doing so if you.
Correct.
And a fine for not doing so if you were supposed to.
And that's the reason why we want to spay and neuter everything before it leaves, because we just do not have the staff to be going. People that have not spayed and neutered their animals.
And I would take a recommendation that you really consider, um, increasing the cost for the unaltered dogs.
I don't think that we should rehome unaltered dogs, I think anything that comes through us should get spayed and neutered.
Right, but.
No, but if someone comes in and says, I wanna keep my dog, cause it's a hunting dog, or I'm, I'm breeding it, or whatever. They can get an unaltered permit, but what they're doing, they're, I mean, if they're a kennel, there's no worries about that, you get it. But if it's just a private citizen, what is happening in our community is people are breeding dogs in their homes, their apartments. And they're selling them for a profit, but the person who buys them does not have the guarantee of a business behind them.
That's correct, and some dogs sell, one, one dog can sell for seven hundred to five thousand dollars.
I've seen some.
Yeah, and.
So if you can't pay a fee to not have them, to keep them on alter, you don't, you don't, you know what I'm saying?
Again, that is another, another discussion that we really would like to have with you about specifically unaltered permits. And actually have been speaking with Judge Kavanaugh about this because, again, um, Stephanie knows this, there's a ordinance in there on one page, it says one thing. And then two or three pages over, it says something different, because the unaltered permit was, cause I sat on the board and helped write that. Was never supposed to be for anybody and their brother to get their animal unaltered. We have a nuisance spay and neuter ordinance, and the first thing that when you're called out, when our animal control officers are called out. They are looking for vaccinations, and they're looking for spay and neuter certificates, because it is, it is part of our ordinance that you must. If it's maturity, it must be spayed and neutered, so you can't say that on one hand and on the other one. So you can't say that on one hand, and on the other one say, "Well now, if you don't wanna, uh, go by the ordinance, then we have this out over here." The out is supposed to be the ordinance where it states AKC registered animals, hunting dogs, older animals, animals that have emergencies and can't have surgeries. Those are supposed to be the outs, or licensed freeder.
Right. I mean, I thought those were the things that identified-
That's not what the ordinance says.
That's correct.
Ju- just so we're clear, nothing leaves our animal control shelter unaltered, right? Like every, everything leaves spayed or neutered.
Unless it's of kittens, most of the time they will not spay and neuter.
Sure, yeah, well, if it's not, yeah.
Absolutely.
Other, but other than that, like, there's no-
That is what has been happening.
Well, this is a labradoodle, so we can, you know, like-
So our taxpayers, again, that after the twenty-five thousand, that has been coming out of my budget, but it's not budgeted there. So, we've got to figure out a way to pass that cost on to some of the pet parents.
But for a long time, they were, they were allowing them to go out, the, the adoptive parents would sign an agreement, and we had nobody going to check and make sure that they had.
No, that's like, yeah, and because we don't have that, nothing should leave our shelter unaltered, like that, like, period.
And the other thing was we would give them a certificate, and then we couldn't go out and give another certificate even if they didn't take the dog and get him altered.
Absolutely.
Cause, cause there was no expiration on it, so. So I, I just, I, I really think we need to, if, you know, if, if this is what we wanna pass, I think we need to look at the cost for the unaltered pet.
Okay.
I think that needs to be significantly higher.
Could you give a, a guidance for staff to put that in, and we can make that change before we come back before you tonight?
Yeah, what, what do you, um, help me understand, that's for people who like move here with a dog that's not spayed or neutered?
No, if you're, if you have hunting dogs, like Dr. Dr. Ha- Hopkins has a bunch of hunting dogs, and he didn't want his dogs fixed because that's what they are. Well, he comes here with a certification showing that they're either AKC registered or they're specific for hunting, then he has, he can get an unaltered permit per pet. Because, cause we're saying everybody needs to be spayed and neutered. There are some exceptions.
But there are some exceptions, and if you fit in the exception, you gotta pay us this extra money.
Right, if you're a kennel and you run in a business, then you can keep an animal unaltered. But if you're, it's just your pet, they need to be fixed.
Absolutely. That's, that's what-
Unless they're too old to make whatever, make babies or whatever.
Okay.
So that needs to be fixed, but I would like to suggest that the unaltered fee go to three hundred dollars. I mean, I don't-
It should-
You're selling dogs for two thousand dollars a pop, like, three hundred dollars is not, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I don't, I-
And if you've got a stable of hunting dogs.
I don't have an altered pet. I'm just saying, part of the problem that we're having in the community with all of these dogs getting out there is that people are breeding them at home, and then they can come and pay a hundred dollars for an unaltered permit.
Backyard breeding is exactly what it is.
I think it should be a thousand. Like, I mean, like that, if you're a legitimate breeder, like, then fine, pay the money.
If you're, if you're a legitimate, if this is your business.
To get your breeding license by the way from the state is like fifty bucks. It's like an insult. Like, it's like, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, see, I'm a breeder." You go on the Secretary of State's website and pay him fifty bucks. It's a joke.
Jump it up to three hundred dollars this time, and then next month, uh, next time, uh, Vicky comes, we say, "Let's, let's look at it again."
For me, I don't think any of these numbers are high enough. All right? My dog is not a big dog, and I got it to bark at people who come near my house, and, uh, one bag of dog food on sale for my medium-sized dog is ninety dollars. She goes through a bag of that a month. And that's my kid's responsibility to feed her, and I'll be honest, sometimes they forget to. You know what I'm saying? So like, that's stretching this dog's food out. And so, I'm looking at this going, this isn't even two months of upkeep for just an average-sized dog. Uh, if you can't afford that, then you shouldn't have a dog. Dogs are expensive. You can't just let it go and say, "Go find some food." You have to provide this dog's food and shelter and, you know, warmth in the winter and medical care, and if you can't, you know, "Hey, I can't afford that. Can I sign a pauper's affidavit to get one for free?" No, because if you can't afford this, then you can't afford to feed this dog. Like, I, I'm sorry.
Ryan, how are you on this?
I'm all right with a three hundred, but I, I mean, this, again, this is starting to a little too much government overreach again to my, I mean, you, if I, if I have a couple Labradors over there, my duck dogs, and I don't wanna have them worked on, y'all never even know I've got these Labradors. So it's, it's unenforceable. We'll never be able to enforce what we're trying to come up with, so. Um, but unless it got out and got to the neighbors, then it got picked up, then it's on the radar, and then you go get it, then you have to pay for it, you know?
But that's, that's not, that's how everything works in animal control.
That's a complaint. It's complaint-driven. Like I said, if you keep your animals up and you keep them taken care of, and there's no reason for us to be there, then it's all your business. But when your dog starts roaming free, killing chickens, you know, causing accidents, different things like that, then they're gonna knock on your door, and they immediately want the spay and neuter because it's part of our ordinance. Why is your dog roaming? Why is your dog not vaccinated?
Right. So what if, what if then we, we just raise that to three hundred, right? But if you didn't, and you were supposed to, now there's this fee. Now there's this essentially a fine. Okay, you, you gotta pay the three hundred plus twelve hundred more. You know, you should've done this upfront. You see what I'm saying? Like, that's, that's the back, that's the enforcement mechanism, is, okay, it's, you know, it's a normal kinda nominal fee.
All right, let's, let's get it to three hu- let's vote on it this sa- saving at three hundred dollars. We can agree with that. We'll talk about the other part of it in a separate issue to be able to do that, and give the time for Vicky and, uh, uh, Steve to be able to work that. We're good, everybody good with that?
Non-compliance surcharge.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely that. And, and like I said, I just, you'll give us, you'll be driving the numbers on your dashboard for us to be able to see if things, if things change at all. And, you know, you may or may not be able to get the grants you need for to, for additional spay and neuter, and you just have to bring that back to us because we, nobody can leave there, that shelter, without being fixed.
Amen.
Okay. All right, let's crank on. Uh, next-
Unless you're a kitten under six months old.
Right, right, right.
If their puppy's under six months old.
Or you already had a hysterectomy.
But I'm gonna be honest.
Where they employed.
Yes, if the pet parent is going ahead and paying, um, we had two puppies adopted Saturday, and they already have, um, uh, because they're over five pounds, they'll be going to, um, Jaffe Paulson Hampton, and they'll be going ahead and being fixed in two weeks.
I- is there a way for those pets that are too young to get spayed, you know? This is kinda cooked into that. Okay, come back when it gets that old, and now we can, we can hook you up with whoever does spay and neuter it. You see what I'm saying? Like-
So, we have a couple of different contracts, um, with a couple of different vetting associations, and, um, adult dogs go to this particular person, spay and neuter, uh, for kittens and puppies go to this particular person. And the compliance so far is about eighty-four percent of them bringing it back. And what ends up happening, I'm gonna be quite honest with you, what ends up happening is, we call, we make calls, we send out letters, to the point that I'm coming to get the pet. Because in your thing, it says spay and neuter, you're supposed to spay and neuter your pet, and I mean-
Yes, you're breaking the law. You're breaking the law.
Someone usually shows up at their next appointment.
What, what if we, what if we kept money as a bond that they get back when they, I mean-
We are keeping their money. They're paying for it upfront if they're not unaltered.
But I mean, they, they have to give us five hundred bucks that we hang on to, and then when they come back and go, "Here's the thing," we go, "Here's your five hundred dollars back."
I know.
Yeah, our only problem is-
I mean, I'm just-
I, I think that's a great idea, and we will definitely take a look at that.
Just workshopping and just generally, I mean, that might be fifty bucks.
If we can, if we can work that through tonight, then we can, we can say in six months, we wanna review it. But most definitely, your rates will be coming up for an annual review. And then we can look and see, did we have a, a hundred animals that were civil cases? And, and is the reimbursement, we're gonna get back off setting from what your regular budget is, did it pay for itself? And then did you actually go over the real budget? So, yeah, I just say, let's, let's just do that.
Let's get to three hundred, let's get this thing on the books, and then we will, uh, ask Vicky to come back and talk to us again.
But, 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 but do we need to change the thing that says, "This is what unaltered is, this is the unaltered problem here, and this is the unaltered?"
Yeah, the definition.
We, we will make that change for you, Ms. Quinn.
We will make that change. Um, and then, uh, with the adoption and vetting fees, we're gonna go forward with what we have here tonight, or?
That's gonna be the plan for the vote for this evening. They will consider and vote on it.
Is there anything that I need to go and change before this evening?
Just the three hundred dollars.
Three hundred dollars, okay.
Um, and this is good timing for us. You asked for six months, so February, March of next year, we will be bringing the budget back to you. So this will be a discussion during budget time for next year.
Uh, yeah, budget's the best time for this. At all the other meetings, everyone says, spend more, spend more, then you get to the budget, and everyone says, "You gotta raise these fees up everywhere," you know, and so, that's when we need to have the fee discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky.
Next on the agenda this afternoon is a presentation to review a resolution for adoption along the, along with the bylaws for the CSBG. I believe Larry Wallace, our grant manager, is to present the information. Larry, welcome back.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Sheriff Davis, Commissioners, Dr. Ledbetter.
Hey Larry.
How you doing? Uh, I'm here today to request approval for the establishment of the Spalding County Community Service Block Grant Advisory Board and the adoption of its governing bylaws. Uh, we annually receive community service block grant funds from the Georgia Department of Human Services, uh, and these funds provide services for our low-income residents. The federal CSBG regulations require that we establish an advisory board as a condition of receiving these grant funds. Uh, it is not optional. Uh, it is a federal compliance requirement. And so today I'm asking you to approve two items, the resolution creating the Spalding County Community Service Block Grant Advisory Board, and also the bylaws that govern how this board operates. Uh, several features of the advisory board, it's a tripartite structure, so there are a minimum of three members, a maximum of nine. At least one-third of those members, uh, represent the low-income population within the county. Exactly one-third represent elected officials from within the county, and the other remaining members represent private sector. This includes business, industry, labor, religious organizations, law enforcement, education, and the community service organizations. Uh, the primary responsibilities of the members are develop programs, uh, planning, implementation, and evaluation of the grant funds. Uh, they will approve the annual CSBG project budget, approve any purchases, subcontracts, and also any budget revisions. Uh, members are, will have two formal meetings a year, uh, and any other special meetings that they need with proper notice. Uh, they will serve two-year terms. To start, they will be staggered with a one-year term for one member. Uh, they will serve a maximum of, can serve a maximum of two consecutive terms. The CSBG grant administrative staff will serve as the chair and secretary of the advisory board. There will be standing committees, committees, excuse me, for governance, finance, and board nominating. And all meetings will be, uh, subject to Georgia Open Meetings Law. The low-income representatives, uh, have to be selected as part of a democratic selection process. They will be elected by other low-income community members through a public process, uh, where we will make applications available online and other community organizations. The elected officials may serve personally or appoint a representative to serve on your behalf. Uh, and the private sectors, uh, member will also be appointed by the Board of Commissioners. There are training requirements for each of the members, um, annual conflict of interest disclosures required. There is no cost to the county. All members serve without compensation. And, um, there is a potential of losing federal funds, losing all of the CSBG funds if we don't come into compliance with this requirement. And so I respectfully recommend it, uh, at this evening's meeting that you approve the resolution creating the board and also adopting the bylaws. Uh, the bylaws are attached. I believe you have a copy of those. And I will pause for any questions that you may have at this time.
Uh, you know I got a question. Um, so-
I do too, so.
The CSBG money that we have been getting through the county from the water authority would go before this committee as well?
That's CDBG.
Okay.
This is CSBG.
This is community, that's community development.
That's correct.
This is community service.
Correct, yes ma'am.
So where do we getting with community service so far? What have we been getting money for?
Um, boost-
I know Three Rivers money.
Yeah, Three, it's Three Rivers money. It, uh, accounts for boost money, uh, boost grants, uh, in, I don't remember what-
Kelly has some funds for nutrition services, senior nutrition, and also, uh, the summer program, the after-school programs, and also the summer program that she's doing this year.
So the food programs, all of those grants that come basically through Three Rivers.
Yes ma'am.
So all of those, this advisory committee would look at these grants and say, "We, we recommend you go ahead and go forward," or whatever.
Or we recommend that, um, we RFP this particular portion of the grant fund out to a third party, uh, or we, uh, we recommend that our, uh, collaborative take care of this portion of it. I- it's an opportunity for you to have complete oversight of the grant funds that are coming in. This is actually a mandated service moving forward for us. Um, and, and with the changes that are going on at the federal level with reducing the number of funds that are available, uh, this actually puts us in a much better position to really stand up and say, "We need more additional funds for, uh, for boost grant, or for meals on wheels, or for any of the other monies that are available."
So I know it says two mandatory meetings annually, but, um, I don't, does all of the Three River grants come in at one time? So I'm just kinda figuring like, you know, can they show up and review the grants, and then come back and have a meeting? Cause clearly, if they're coming in at different times, they will have to meet.
The, the majority of the monies come in at one time, but the, the second meeting that we, that I would recommend, and I'd love to have Larry's feedback on this, the second meeting is any leftover funding from other counties that's not being used. Three Rivers actually brings that money back in-house and reallocates that to counties who have, for lack of a better way to put it, a shovel-ready project ready to go. Um, so those would be the two times that I would foresee the, the committee being needed for dis- dispersing of those funds.
That's correct. Uh, the two required meetings are one for the initial application where we are requesting money from the state, and then the second time is where we have received some carryover funds and need to reallocate that money. So those are the two required meetings, and there'll be additional meetings as needed.
And of course, if they need to meet again because they need more information, then that's up to the Board to decide. Do we, now, mostly we do pretty good, but we have some issues with not having enough people to show up to meet. So are we thinking that three people is going to be enough? I, I'm thinking five.
Well, well, I can share with you, but remember, it's a third, 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 so it's gotta be three, six, nine, or one, one, one. It's gotta be an odd number for, for dispersment, clarity.
And divided by three.
Yep, um-
A third, you saying a third of the committee has to be either from these sectors?
Correct.
Yeah, so it's either gotta be three people, nine people.
Well, like I said, I, 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 I just hate the idea that if they need to meet and they can't meet because there's not enough people.
Now, one- We have to pay attention.
One of the things that, uh, that we used as an analog for this was Cobb Counties, and Cobb actually uses three people.
Okay, well, if they can do it, we-
Cause they're just an advisory board.
It is. It's just an advisory board. It, it, it seems to be, and this was something that Larry did, he actually went and had a conversation with Cobb County. Uh, it was much easier to pull three people together than it was to pull a quorum of nine.
Well, I mean, yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, he had two of our last two or three meetings with another board, and they, you know, you know, nobody's there, so. Yeah, I'm fine with that. I, I think it's a great idea, and it's what we need to do to be in compliance and be eligible for funding. Because that's our senior nutrition program, that's our youth nutrition program, that's meals on wheels, um, summer boost and summer program, so, yeah.
Larry, in the federal part, did it say you, you were to be the chairman? That's unusual for us. We don't usually make a staff member the chairman. We usually make whoever the citizens are divide among themselves and become as chair. Um, uh, I, I, I'm big on the idea of citizens being in charge, and you being the advisor, the secretary, I'll, I can do that also, but is it required that you be the chair?
It does say that. It does say that whoever the executive is who's managing the grant serves as the chair.
If you're not a member-
He's a non, he's a non-voting member.
I would not be voting.
So, so, yeah, that still leaves it-
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that. I'm good with that, yes. Because this is gonna be a little awkward, especially in the beginning, as we try to get this thing started and set up, and trying to find the right people.
And I think as a person who can manage the, manage the meeting and manage the business that they'll need to do, his expertise would be valuable for them not sitting there all day trying to figure out what's going on.
We're gonna have to look around, I think, to find the people to fit that category of low income.
Absolutely. And, and part of the requirement is to go to those, those programs that we use through CSBG to see if any of those folks are interested or actually have the qualifications to serve. Um, and so, I mentioned also the democratic process. It requires that low-income folks, folks designated as, you know, having a certain income, actually vote on the low-income representative. So, a little difficult, a little-
We're gonna, we're gonna have to look around. That's not as easy as to have a, I'm sorry.
How do other communities do?
They, they do it the same way. They have to. It's required by-
You get a piece of paper, you fill it out.
Well, no, not, not a formal election. This is an informal, um, if, so for example, part of the funds serve senior nutrition. There are several people within senior nutrition who have provided paperwork. They are low income. We can go to those folks, so we'll go to the senior center.
You have to go to all, we don't get to pick. We go to all those people, and then they pick.
And this is a list of names who be eligible and you-
And this is a list of names to be eligible and you can vote for?
Yes.
Okay, you'll figure that out.
Okay, alright, any other questions? We're gonna vote on that tonight, alright, good, thank you Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you Larry.
Uh, let's see here now, uh, next on the agenda, we'll receive updates to ordinances discussion. I believe our county attorney, Ms. Stephanie Wyndham, and the staff will lead us through this discussion.
I, I'm not sure what you actually have in front of you if.
It is planning and development amendment to the building, the, the National Building Code.
Okay, cause I have a few, but this is the one that we, we definitely want to, to get through so that you can vote on it tonight. Um, this is an update to our twenty twenty-one ordinance. Um, it does make several changes, many are just cosmetic, um, but, uh, Mr. Fletcher has gone through all of those with code enforcement, and, and we've been through it together with staff. It, it does still adopt those, um, state law, and the state law building codes and the latest addition of those as they change to include any appendix that may be attached to, to those. Um, and if you look at section, it's section eight dash one zero zero one, number two B, the International Property Maintenance Code.
Have you got a page?
It's gonna be.
So my pages may be different from yours since your.
Steve's looking.
Since your landscape and, um, portrait.
Two B?
It's gonna be two.
Two B.
Correct.
On page three?
Correct.
So the inter, where it says International Property Maintenance Code.
Sure, that's right.
Yeah, okay.
Um, we, we needed to add some dates in that, that are required by that International Property Maintenance Code for, um, heat supply. So that is where we made those changes, and this is gonna require every owner and operator of any building who rents, leases, or lets any more, i- i- one or more dwelling units or sleeping units to provide heat to occupants during the time period from October the fifteenth to March the thirty-first, to maintain a minimum temperature of sixty-eight degrees Fahrenheit. Um, and then occupiable workspace, that indoor, um, space also from October fifteenth to March thirty-one to maintain a minimum temperature of sixty-five degrees Fahrenheit.
What does that mean in English?
So in, in English, if you, if I rent a house to you, then I have to provide you with, in the, in that occupiable space, I have to provide you with, with the ability to have heat.
So, so you, if I'm gonna get a gas heater, you have to have a gas line that I can hook up to? Or you have to provide me with a heating unit?
Yes.
You have to provide them with a heating unit that is capable of keeping the temperature at.
Sixty-eight degrees.
Sixty-eight degrees.
Between October the fifteenth and March the thirty-first of every year.
So when the Ava Apartments, when all their heats went out, the owner just got them little space heaters and said, here's your heater.
That's not acceptable.
Not okay.
It is not acceptable, and what's interesting is when, uh, when Luke did all of the homework on this and came back with the IPCM, ICPM?
IPMC.
IP, thank you, IPMC, um, there were clarification requirements as notes that indicated that this language specifically had to be in our code.
We had to have those dates.
In the temperature.
Yep.
The temperature is actually in the, the IPMC already, but we had to, to provide the dates that we were gonna require that, so, um, staff and I discussed that. And at length, actually.
So, so this, this kind of makes me go back to what James is always saying, about how you have landlords who have leased their place. And I can name ten or fifteen places right now where if you go into that place to live, you have to either bring yourself your own electric heater, or you have to bring a gas heater, or else you're not going to have any heat. So, so, so you're saying something different?
That's right.
That the owner of the place has to provide a unit that will provide adequate heat?
Correct.
That is correct.
Okay.
But, but only during that period of time.
Yeah, October to March.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, we also changed throughout any reference to the Georgia Department of Community Development to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, so you'll see that, um, a lot through, through this, um.
Can we go to page four right fast?
Mm-hmm.
Section eight, ten oh two, se- subsection two, quality control. So this is the thing that I've been talking about for eight years. And this document currently says, quality control of materials and workmanship is not within the purview of the construction code as it relates to the purposes stated therein.
That is correct.
I noticed that.
Other counties change it, I wanna change it. That's, that's exactly what I've been talking about for eight years. Yeah, you can't use substandard materials. Yep, we can stop you, we can say that you can't do that, well, we're not gonna do that. We can, let's stop them. Hey, they, they didn't do this right, well then that's sub-quality workmanship, we can stop you. Uh, I, this might be weird, but related to this specific job, I follow some home inspectors on, uh, Instagram. And they go through and show where these joints didn't line up. That's a quality control inspection that, that we, our building control folks should be doing and citing them and making them redo it. They do it in Forside County, they do it in Cobb County, they do it in Cherokee County, we can do it here. That, that's what I've been talking about, and this specifically says, yeah, we're not gonna do that.
I saw that, I didn't like that either, but, um, so what do you do? You, you've got one building inspector here, we, we've got one, one and a half, one and a third.
One and a half.
Okay, one and a half building inspectors here. Sun City comes in with a, I'm doing pod fifteen, and that's thirty houses. So in a real perfect world, somebody from our department should go in as they're, they've done the foundation and say, okay, foundation is good. And then when you put the frame up, they should make sure that that, that is done, and they should make sure that the insulation. So, so in order for us, I, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I'm saying there's, we need a way to be able to enforce it, which means we need more bodies in inspecting, um, in order to do that, because we can't expect people to, if they've, you know, done stuff, said they're gonna do stuff, and then we don't go back to check, and when we go back the whole house or a whole, whatever it is that's put together, we don't really know what's in the wall. And we cannot hold one person, one and a half persons accountable for the pod, thirty pods at Sun City, and then another fifteen pods out on West McIntosh, and what's going on up at Heron Bay. If we want that to be done, which clearly we can do it, but let's not do it unless we actually set a plan for how we're going to enforce it. That, that's the only thing, and I think that's been a problem for us in the past, is that we were not willing to spend the money to have those staff to do that. Um, I have really, while I've been here, there's only been one time that the county was sued when an inspector failed to properly inspect a building, and the building fell.
I'm sorry, I just knocked on some wood.
Oh.
Yeah, right.
And so, so I'm saying, it can happen, but there was no one else to go and check that, or either he was busy doing something else, so. I'm, I'm to- totally fine with you saying, yeah, we're gonna do this, we need to do it.
Abs- I totally agree, this, that's really the main thing that we can do to raise the bar in the county. Uh, I've, I've received several calls from people whose houses didn't pass the inspection. And they call and they're like, that mean county inspector, and I go, what did they fail you on? Well, this, that, and the other. Well, that means that the person who built your house didn't do it right. So our guy, you're so lucky that our guy came and gave you a free inspection and told them to fix it, but I really, you're giving him a hard time. And they clearly deserve to be given a hard time, they're not, they, you know, you thought you were getting this house and you're getting this house. Like, it's, that's not us, that's your builder being a putz and not doing it right, like, you know. So, the, the whole attitude towards the situation isn't that we're doing some, you know, like, the, the only people that should be upset about this is builders who plan to build crappy houses who wanna keep getting away with it. And anybody else who complains doesn't understand what we're trying to do here, uh, period.
So changing that section to read as follows, quality control of materials and workmanship is within the purview of the construction codes to include as it relates to the purposes stated therein. Is that satisfactory?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, but we have to go back into the next section, thousand and three, and change B, E, and F.
The previous section?
No, no, the next, the next section, on page five, the four or five, you know. The provisions of the International Mechanical Code as adopted by the state shall apply to insulation and mechanical system. No, you should have required levels of insulation. But, you know, the number one complaint of citizens of City of Griffin, uh, that, that I hear is, my power bills are so high.
Right.
But their power cost is lower than the state's, thirty percent lower. Well, why is the power cost so high? Cause these houses aren't, the level of insulation is.
That's right.
fictitious, I mean, it's, it's, it's so low. So you have to keep your AC on, your heat on, all the time, cause it just flows out, cause there's no required insulation. So we need to come in and say, no, you gotta have every space that's available, you know, all, all five sides, and if you have a crawl space to the floor too, needs to be insulated, and we need to have, there's a, there's an insulation term of like how, how quick heat goes through it, and there, it's like a standard. We need to say. Yeah, the R factor, and it's gotta be to this R factor, and we could say that, and then you can come around with the thermocouple and go, oh, sorry, you gotta boil more in the attic, you gotta boil more in the swall, you gotta boil more in your.
That's not him doing this.
Like, no, that's not, that's, that's not Luke, that would be David's.
Yeah, building inspector, yeah, okay, yeah, I'm put, let me tell you, on the other side of it, back in the beginning, Spalding County did a good thing. Uh, the water people out there were putting the water pipes in, in our slabs. They weren't closing the pipes up. We found animals had climbed into the water pipes, into the little pipes, gone into it. Next thing is, the water people came and hooked the pipe up. We had animal stuff inside there, trying to go back and get it back out. So we, the pu- Pufty at that time, came to this county, county said, alright, every time now when you lay the pipe in, you've gotta close it off with a bolt to be able, so nothing else. We had bolts in it and everything else, absolutely black stuff coming out, the water going in was clean. So it was a good thing for us, but that's the kind of stuff that you can stop happening and simply say, and they all learn it real quickly.
And that's the same thing, F here, plumbing, the provisions of the International Plumbing Code shall apply to, like, hey, wait a minute.
Mister Chairman, um, this, these are, some of these changes we do need to go ahead and make, we don't need to wait.
I, I agree.
And Director Allen can address the fact that what you're talking about is going to be addressed in the new ordinance.
I just don't want everyone to think that we're done, that this is the change that we're aiming for.
This is just the beginning of what we're about to do, and I, I just.
We don't, we don't, we don't, we're not trying to add my changes tonight, I'm just letting you guys know.
Oh, I, I.
This is where we gotta.
I, I think they're exactly what needs to be said this evening, and I just wanted to highlight the fact that David, you are making those changes to the updated zoning code and, and building codes.
Right, so you have a new sixty-eight-page appendix you were given about a month's review in advance about early May that includes all the exterior stuff that you want, plus what you're talking about, about insulation.
Uh, and, and pipes and roofing, does it have those?
Yes, I mean, a lot of that is already covered with our, um, international codes. However, there are some other elevated standards you can do as well.
We ta- we would take out the not and change accept in the next line to, to, to say to include.
Okay.
Otherwise, it doesn't make any sense.
We'll make those minor changes and get this thing blessed, and then we'll move on and clean it up from there.
Remember, this is our first reading this evening, um, so you will get a much cleaner version at the next reading. If it's not what you want, you can table, and then we'll bring back the, the final reading for you. But we're gonna get ninety percent, maybe hopefully a hundred percent by the second reading.
So basically, what you're talking about, your concern, would also fall under the energy saying that this will regulate the thermal resistance, fire leakage, and the design and selection of what kind of heating, electricity, or lighting stuff that they would do to.
So, and again, it doesn't have to be.
Page.
You can't, I, I think we're on page five, sorry.
Yeah, she's on page six.
Oh, you're on six?
Six, eight.
Yeah, yeah, again, what, where that specifically says, right now it says, the international, you know, conservation code, the, the international mechanical, me- mechanical code, the, the builders make that. It's not a bunch of homeowners going, yeah, I'm really interested in this, it's the builders who wanna make those standards as low and cheap as they can possibly get away with. And so we have a responsibility as the government to step in and say, you can't build crap in our county. And we do that right now on a piecemeal, here's all your conditions with this zoning and whatever. Hey, you wanna build whatever, as long as it's excellent, build whatever you want in our county. This is our way to say, anything that gets built has to be to this standard.
Minimal standard.
You know, yeah, right now the standard is.
So, well, can, can you make those changes before tonight?
Probably, probably, before the second reading?
Yes, before the second reading.
Okay, then the only change we'll make for tonight is not.
And, and on the one, yeah, and take out accept.
Yeah, take out accept and.
Okay, those two.
Before y'all close the door on that.
We're, well, we're not closing the door on the entire ordinance.
Cause I had a question on, on the page twelve of what we have.
Which is what section?
Time limitations for.
Oh, yeah, you asked, should we put a time limit?
No, my comment was, well, first, um, section eight, if y'all look at section eight, ten oh six, um, it's, it said initially in two thousand and one to replace appendix four, zoning article four, section four oh eight, but it was not replaced. Um, so, uh, Mr. Al- Director Allen has looked at that, and it will be replaced with this, a- and so there's a, there will be a resolution for, for y'all to, to pass that says that, um, that particular section will, will be, will refer to this section of the, of the code of ordinances.
Okay.
Okay, because my thing is, I don't, I don't guess we have a plan right now, but, sec- you know, people get a, a, a permit, and two years later they start trying to work on it.
Well, there's a time limit, there, there is a time limit.
That, that it was sixty days, but right now we have nothing, is what you're saying?
No, we have, we have this, but we also have something else that is not exactly the same that, that was supposed to be replaced by this, but it didn't get replaced.
Um, page twelve, I think this is still in section six. Yeah, section six, A, no, that can't be right, uh, EA. The shearity bond amounts, is it three hundred dollar shearity bond for residential? That seems.
It says no less than three hundred, but.
Which means three hundred.
Yeah, I don't know what.
That's, that's nothing.
Right, so Stephanie's recommendation is that we come up with a calculation that actually makes sense.
Well, the other ones are ten, ten dollars per square foot.
That's correct.
I think we should just make them all ten dollars per square foot.
I agree.
Alright, that's a, a first, not this tonight.
That, everything you're discussing now, we'll do first reading this evening, and then we'll come back at second reading with all of the updates that you've made.
Draconian, I want it.
Yes, okay.
We can always, we can always zone down, we can always exempt, we can always, it's, it should start here.
Anything else from you, county attorney?
Um, yes, on the, uh, uh.
Uh, for issuing permits?
Where I had comments. Now, should we include an actual time limit for the action on permits? Because we say without unreasonable or unnecessary delay, and that is so vague.
I, I think, I think once we get a more robust team out there doing it, then that, yes. But right now, we've got one and a half people doing it, like, I don't know if that's.
Let's make sure, uh, our.
Well, I, I, I do think that action on permits need to be in a timely manner. So i- if you've got a permit that's outstanding, in fact, I, I think Commissioner Flowers-Taylor brought one up today on a location, uh, they filed permit back in February, and they're just now getting started. Um, the, the permit says within six months, so they're within the timeline. But if they waited a year before they started, that's excessive.
This is the Department of Community Development shall act upon an application for a permit. This is our time limit for ourselves to issue them a permit or deny it. And right now, we're, we're a little behind, so issuing ourselves, uh, a time limit for us issuing their permit is a little premature, I think.
I, I'm just not crazy about the fact that.
When we have a full staff and we're ready to go, then, yes, I agree, but.
Yeah, I'm just not crazy about the fact that unreasonable or unnecessary delay has absolutely no, um,
We don't come unglued on those words.
Definition for what is reasonable and what is necessary.
Six months would be unacceptable, uh, I, I would think that if David and his team could not act upon a permit within six months after receiving application to move that, uh, permit forward, that might be a little excessive.
Well, then, we put in there, if no action is taken, then it's denied, you know what I'm saying, like, I mean, okay.
I, I think that would be acceptable for what the.
Because if, if we get six thousand permit requests all at once.
Agreed.
Then we should have a standard action of, we'll get through as many of these as we can, and the rest of y'all get no, they get told no, because we can't inspect them on the back end.
We're saying sixty-five. We're saying sixty-five now, uh, no, we're saying that it's six months that we have to.
No, right now, it says an unreasonable time.
Oh, we. Without unreasonable or unnecessary delay.
Forty-five days, sixty days, whatever is.
It's thir- I mean, thirty days, and then if we didn't get to it in thirty days, it's a no, reapply, which means, boy, we're so behind.
Yep.
That we can't do the inspections, we can't do the.
Associated with applying, so you'd have to waive the fee if it was a reason for us not being able to do the work.
That's correct, if it's on us, then we have to waive the fee.
What do you think?
So.
Well.
Definitely be a timeframe.
Microphone, De- David, microphone.
It definitely needs to be a timeframe on our first response to a permit, cause if they screw it up and don't have the necessary stuff, they could go three months, but it's their fault, not ours. So it needs to be a initial response, maybe time, that's fine with us, we don't. We have it all on a calendar with our software and I know what's due and when it's due and. We rarely go several days over without a permit being, that's, it's very rare that a permit is lingering and lingering.
And that is acting, I mean, it issuing permits, it says action on permits, that is acting upon an application for a permit. If you say you don't have X, Y, and Z.
Right, right, right. It's kinda like a, uh. Open records requests.
Yeah.
Not responding is not responding within three days that we're working on it.
Thirty, forty-five days?
Yeah, it's fine.
Would say the board?
If I haven't responded on a permit thirty days and I should be shot.
Especially if it's, hey, you gotta cross the T or something.
Right.
We're talking about the initial response back. Hey, you didn't give us these things, or hey, we're moving along, we need these things.
If I ignore a permit for forty-five days for no reason, I should be sh- be shot, so, you know, go ahead and put it in.
Hey, hey, you know, what if, what if six thousand permits get dropped at the same time, you know what I'm saying, like. I mean, we just had, how many get asked for, so.
Okay.
Um. Then on schedule.
Response can s- can be, um, you're, you you will receive a response within sixty days, um.
Right.
As as we do with open records request, um.
Sure. We will follow up on you.
This requires legal review, therefore you may not receive a response for forty-five days.
Alright, seven, seven D is B's, I think that's your next, your next point.
I'm not, I'm not super.
But no more than once in a calendar year.
I am not, oh, what for fees?
Yes.
Schedule permit fees.
And page sixteen.
And my, but my addition of but no more than once in a calendar year is really just to make this, um, as. As uniform as possible with the other fees that we are talking about throughout the code. You're, you're allowed to to change them once in a calendar year.
So annually.
Annually.
Well, can we change that from but no more than once a year to at least annually? Cause that's, uh, as maybe reviewed from time to time, at least annually.
That, that's the same coin, just the other side.
Yep, because then if we want to do it more.
Every month.
That that, that's true, and what if we don't change it annually, does that put us in a position?
No, it's cause it's reviewed, as maybe revised from time to time.
And maybe we didn't change it, so maybe it needs to be reviewed annually.
At at least annually.
I'll, I'll like that change.
You see, it's cause right now, it's, that's what it says, as maybe revised from time to time, maybe, you know. And then instead of, but no more than once a calendar year, we put at least annually.
Well, alright. So it looks like seventeen, eighteen.
And then a bunch of he's get changed to they's.
Nineteen.
And theirs.
Okay.
And that's fine.
Yeah, I think this is going to be the discussion that, um, Commissioner Flowers Taylor wanted to have as number eight.
Right, 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 uh, the Board of Appeals, zoning Board of Appeals. We all talked it after the the last zoning meeting, we talked to. Trying not to keep my back here, we talked about the fact that we probably need to have a second zoning meeting. And if either, it's either the last two times or the last three times, the zoning Board of Appeals. It's not met either because of a quorum or because of something. And generally, the heartburn that we as a board, that I've gotten as a board member, has been on. Various decisions being made that contradict of what we want to see happen in the community.
On the board before us.
And so, so I'm feeling like. We need to take that responsibility back.
I I think for appeals, it should definitely be you, which is why I brought, I highlighted that section in the first place.
The other board should be on strict compliance, how do you strictly comply with this, these are the rules, I'm sorry, if you want them changed, go to the five.
Well, one of the recommendations that is coming from our zoning attorney as a result of the planning law. Uh, the the zoning plan law changing, uh, last year is to actually do away with the Board of Zoning Appeals. And to put that responsibility solely here at the Board of Commissioners.
Sounds great.
Um, and that ordinance is being, uh, drafted for your consideration right now.
So we're gonna have to meet, I have a second meeting, we just add that to what we're doing, because. Like I said, when when something shows up here and then the Board of Appeals has allowed someone else to do something. And it's really not what we are saying, we we want our place to look like. It's just, it's a conflict in ideas, so I just think that's a responsibility, that was the thing I wanna talk about, is us going ahead. And taking over the responsibility for the the variances in the zoning board.
Yeah, pretty nice for me, absolutely.
Alright, how, Davis, how do you feel about that?
I agree with it in principle, and I don't have a problem, I understand the the logic behind it, but I'm, I'm talking logistics here for a minute. It, it is a text amendment among the many other text amendments we're going to do, it would not get to y'all now till, um.
By.
July. Um, so, um, kinda wanting to know a timeframe here, because we have a June twelfth. Uh, Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, which has already been advertised, we had two applicants who have paid, we'll wait for decisions. Then we have all the stuff from May eighth and May fifteenth that got deferred on till July tenth. So I think I would advise, up to you. Uh, not, and since it will not be finalized until July deletion of that board to. Perceive with the status quo for June and July meetings, and then after that, it probably won't have any more meetings. I think that's really gonna mess with the timetable of those pending applications, if we do something like right this instance.
Could we make, could we make the changes in this section, David, to, um, to remove the Board of Zoning Appeals? And add the Board of Commissioners and make it effective, say, August one, this section?
Yep, I I mean, it would definitely need the ball rolling on the language for sure.
I- and that plays in well with all the advertisements that have already been, uh, placed, not only on the signs on the side of the road. But also in the, uh, the Griffin Daily News for consideration.
Yeah, I don't wanna create a bunch of extra work, I just think that I'm up to here on us saying, why do they do that?
Yeah.
Yep.
By late summer, summer's in, you will have that achieved, yes.
Okay. Alright, what else you got?
Um, the, there is one section that had been reserved, which we have added, um.
Chapter three?
Exterior, chapter three, exterior property areas.
Hmm, does three thousand and one, does that incl- so it says, the occupant shall keep part. Shall keep that part of the exterior property that such occupant occupies or controls in a neat and sanitary condition, is that, does that mean trash?
What page are you on?
Page twenty-four.
Okay.
Uh, trash, garbage, rubbish.
Okay, I just, I didn't see that specifically, so I assumed that's what that was cooked into, I just wanted to make sure that. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, uh, we're not trying to make an H O A out of Spalding County, but like, at the same time.
Right.
We all know the places that.
We don't wanna junkyard in Spalding.
Um. There, um. But I, yeah, code enforcement needs to be able to write.
Yeah.
High grass tickets and.
And say, look, and here it is, boom.
Now, just, just would, would high grass include furniture in your yard or cars?
No, that's, that's sanitation, um, and then.
That's what I was just asking about, so we have twenty-four.
Yeah, grass and weeds is specifically addressed at at eight thirty oh three.
So I'm talking about oh one, that needs.
So I know it says if you have stuff outside of your house, like, there was like a, a raccoon living in somebody's car that was in front and he was having babies and. She was having babies in the car and running out getting stuff.
That's rodent harbage.
So, so I just wanna, yeah.
Right, is a raccoon a rodent?
I just wanna make sure that we're also addressing, you know, junk cars, which we have lots of them in the yards. Right now, because we haven't been importing that. And, um, and I'm okay with, because the grass part and the yard cleaner basically looks the same. There's something at some place I would like to see and hear that. Um, emergency exits, like, like people having furniture all on their front por- porch and an ambulance or or EMS can't get into the house. Because there's no pathway.
Can I speak on that?
Yeah.
Uh, the I- International Property Maintenance Code covers most of those issues, these were just specific points. That were in addition that needed to be added in, so all of that is included in the International Property Maintenance Code already.
Which we incorporate into our ordinance.
Feel like when we came up with the substandard housing ordinance, that we address these very issues in that ordinance. The, the height of grass, what is considered your yard, um, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, did y'all look at those?
I I, I think that what happened in twenty twenty-one was that, um, what was presented to us by Community Development. Took some of that stuff out and did, maybe didn't realize that it had removed some of those things.
That's correct.
So this adds some of the things back that may have been removed previously.
We've done a thorough, thanks to Luke and his team, we have done a thorough deep dive into this chapter and this particular ordinance.
Who, who gets cited, say it's a rental property with high grass, is the renter or the landlord?
It can depend on the lease agreement, but typically the tenant is responsible for maintenance of the yard.
And that's why we say the, we call them the occupant, because we, we don't want it to have to be the owner. Because in some cases, the owner has, you know, has no idea that the, that, that the tenant is keeping ten junk cars in their front yard.
Again, the, the tactic in Atlanta was put it all on the landlord, because if the landlord gets this. Then they put it into their contracts and they're moving folks out that aren't abiding by it. So i- even in Atlanta, if you got code enforcement or the police called, I wanna say it was six times in a calendar year. Like, they would summon the landowner to court and say, what are you gonna do about this? Yeah, like, like, and if you didn't abide by whatever plan that the court ordered you, you know, that you kinda worked on, like. They would, they would condemn your house and bulldoze it, and if it, if it was rentable, I mean, a lot of these were like.
If it was uninhabitable.
Quintessential crack houses, I mean, it would, they would just bulldoze it, if it was rehabable, they'd rehab it and then they'd give it for free to a city or Atlanta police officer. So I mean, like.
Oh.
And, and all the time I worked there, doing, I was in that department, like, we never got sued, nobody, I mean, like, this was a totally illegal. You know, I was going like, can we, can we do it? They did it, I know of no lawsuit, you know, so.
Typically landlords aren't gonna be responsible for cutting the grass and our real, our real impetus behind adding this, this section. Was so that we could start writing some grass and weeds tickets, um, because we're not able to at this point.
But what if, what if that renter, like, doesn't cut his grass? And doesn't remedy it when we cite him and then doesn't pay the fine? We can't put him on probation, we can't put him in jail, it's a county ordinance, you see what I'm saying? And they have a fine, not the landowner, and so we can't go in as a lien, you s- you see the hole that we fall into? Cause they can just go, sue him, what are you gonna do?
And I'm perfectly fine with moving it over to the, the landowner.
I mean, we can make it kinda jointly and separately live, but you know, you're both up here.
I don't think we do one or the other, because I think when we, because I've seen it across the street, when. We, I I mean, I've, I've been in the argument, no, it doesn't ha- we don't have to serve the, the landowner. Who lives in New York State or Guam or somewhere else.
Yeah.
We, we have the tenant here who is responsible and.
Tough luck.
The judge is saying no.
We wanna go towards the owner, I believe.
Oh, and the ju- and the judge says, no, you do have to serve them?
That, yes, I, that we had to, to serve the owner.
Yes.
I, I don't think we, I, I don't think we box ourselves in, I, I think we have to, I, I mean, I think we can include both, but we don't exclude.
That way we could put the, a lien on as, as needed.
Yeah, that's my issue, there's some action that can be taken.
And so the recommendation is to include both.
Yeah, and then through this, we can say, notice to the owner can be given to their renter, like, you know what I'm saying, like. That's your notice, this guy should have told you when he sent you the check every month, you know what I mean, like.
Alright, we're gonna approve this the way it basically is from the first reading.
Uh, and we did add the insect screening to this section, um, Luke, I don't know if you saw that, but, um. So during the period from March thirty-one to September thirty, every door, window and other outside opening needs to have a, a screen. So, for, for insects, to prevent insects from getting inside.
Alright, vote this up tonight, second reading will make some significant changes between now and.
Not so significant.
And now, that's, those are, that's doors and windows, um, required for ventilation, AKA windows that are being left open. As opposed to your front door that's gonna be closed as soon as you, so that doesn't need a screen door, right? Okay, I'm just, that's how I read it.
Yeah.
That's true.
Make sure that.
It's ventilation of habitable rooms, so bedrooms.
Being the window has to be able to open.
Correct.
Well, the room, the windows that are kept open to ventilate the room, as opposed to our front door that I just opened and then closed right behind me. It doesn't necessarily need a screen.
Places have the windows painted shut.
Well, this doesn't require.
That's different, this is about the insect screen, like the.
Yeah, this is just about insect screening.
Oh, but I'm just saying, you can have insect screening on the outside, but if the window is painted shut, you're not using it for ventilation.
Sure, well, then it wouldn't be required there.
Yeah, if it's screwed shut or something like that, you know, to be able to do that, alright, alright.
Just got one more question and I'll let you all go home. Not really go home.
We have a few more items to say.
Two hundred and seventy-six days from when you talk about placing. Uh, taking the house or placing a lien on the house, it is on page twenty-one of this little paper that we got, and it's four, no, it's number five.
Okay, I got it.
So if the owner fails to comply with an order to repair or demolish a dwelling. The public officer may cause such dwelling, building or structure to be repaired, altered or improved, or to be vacated and closed or demolished. Such abatement action shall commence within two hundred and seventy-six days. After the expiration of time specified in the order for abatement by the owner.
That seems like a exceptional amount of time, two, two hundred and seventy days.
It's still, I don't care, seventy, seventy-six, it's still too long.
Is that, is that like a state law?
It's twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Well, what section?
Five.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, but that's. Uh, chapter two, two thousand and two.
Section seven.
Verse five, verse five, is that, that's not right. It's not the Bible.
Section eight, eight two oh two.
Zero, two, two zero zero two.
And then number five.
You have it highlighted.
Oh, um, I, well, I have it highlighted as may amended by time to, time to, from time to time, um.
And the reason I say that is because two hundred and seventy-six days is a lot of time for everybody to forget what's going on.
So keep in mind, that's after, that's after you were cited.
Whatever.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, that's, you know, they're not just gonna walk up and cite you, they're gonna come up and go like, hey, change this or I'm gonna cite you. And then that's months before they cite them, and then there's months before the court date comes, and then the court order is gonna say, well, you've got six months to fix this. And then it's.
Eighteen months.
And the court order, and then when you come in six months later, the, the judge may say, and often does. Oh, you're, I think you're doing a good job, you're getting, you've gotten half of it done, I'll give you three more months, and.
Ninety days?
Yeah.
Be, be done under the court order or get a lien, I don't, like, I don't know why.
I mean, I just think that we give ourselves that much time when you're gonna be possibly getting an extension and then you gotta. You haven't even gotten to the point where you have an order to do something, and maybe you've already, we've been dealing with this for a year. So I just want us to shorten the amount of time that we have to allow people to be able to go through this. Because if you already know, it can stretch out to eighteen months or two years.
I don't see why we wouldn't say such abatement action shall commence immediately after the expiration of time specified in the order for abatement by the owner, I mean, like. Hey, you gotta do it within the time that you've been given, like, not, well, here's your order, well, we'll give you that in more than six months, like, no, do it right now, like.
Do it what the judge says.
It's, just follow the law, I don't, uh, you know what I mean, like, now, there might be, this seems like something that, like, a state law would bake in. You know what I mean, so I don't wanna put us in, that seems like a weird number to just.
Look at that code section, cause I definitely didn't make up two hundred and seventy days, so.
Okay. Okay, we've got it, uh, all right.
That's all I got.
Now, we're, we'll vo- we'll vote this up tonight, and then we'll make, start looking, thinking about changes, and the attorney will bring it back to us to say, hey.
Good question, that's a good question.
Here's some stuff, you'll have to real, really look at some of this stuff, because we're talking about lots of stuff to change and we can't just leave with her, all right. Next on the agen- next on the, thank, thanks, Luke, next on the agenda is a discussion regarding a request to provide a letter of support. For passenger rail line in Georgia, Dr. Ledbetter?
Yep, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, back in February of twenty twenty-three, this board actually signed a letter of support for the. Uh, the I seventy-five Central Corridor Coalition in response to the Georgia Transportation, Department of Transportation. Um, putting together the rail line that will traverse out of Savannah into Atlanta. Um, this is a second request.
It's not a new line, is it, they're just gonna use the existing line?
Uh.
It could be new if it's Atlanta to Macon to Savannah.
That's correct, i- it actually may be new and may sit inside of a right-of-way for, uh, G dot, so.
They're not seizing anybody's backyard or nothing.
Could, uh, because they could build out a high-speed rail just like the Beeline down in Florida.
You know, when I, when I first started going to the ACCG stuff, I talked to the guys from Macon, I talked to the guys from Monroe, Lamar, like, oh, and they were all like, yeah, we would love to get. Uh, was it Nancy Hanks going again, like, that's a great.
It, they're.
Talked to Fulton County, they were like, we're in that, we'd love that.
They are looking for that same level of support here.
Well, spoke to Clayton County and they went, we don't need trains, we need a hyperloop, we should build a hyperloop, and I was like, with what billion dollars? Like, are you out of your mind, like, and they were like, yeah, commuter change, that's stupid, we don't need that, and, so it didn't go anywhere, because they wanted to build a hyperloop instead, like.
All, all we're trying to do is get a letter of support to send up and say, we support trying to do this.
Totally, totally.
It does not require us to spend any money, this is revenue neutral to us.
It, it is not.
Best thing I've heard on it.
Okay, all right, we're, we're moving on with that, uh, last on the agenda this afternoon. Is a discussion regarding Griffin Spalding County Airport Memorandum of Agreement Summary Report. I believe this report will be, uh, presented, uh, by Croy Engineers.
Uh, is Robert gonna come?
Robert's here, but I don't know, he trying to talk to us.
Okay, uh, I, was, motion to, uh, table?
Yes, Jeremy. Um, oh, no, sir.
Well, don't, don't, please don't table this.
No, sir.
We're not, we're not, we can't mo- make any kind of motions right now, this is just a workshop.
Yeah, yeah.
No, sir, I, I mean, th- this is simply an, an update from Croy that, um, letting G dot, that is required. By G dot to allow them to, um, for our memorandum of agreement with Croy, the Airport Authority's memorandum of agreement with Croy to continue. Um, this, this is a required document that was, um.
This is a May fourteenth one? That, that, uh, Ra- uh, Randy signed and he just sat there?
Randy signed it, um, a while.
March fourteen?
Yes, sir, Randy, um, Chairman Peter signed it a couple of months ago, I believe, and.
Yes, yeah, okay.
And it just. Never got on anybody else's agenda and it needs to be, it, it needs to be approved by you and also by the city.
Within, within a smaller window.
All right, did, did everybody have an opportunity to look at it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's got, uh, this action, what's been completed, some of them were wa- uh, ways back, uh, but they said we're gonna do these things, you all okay with this?
Yeah.
Uh, Gwen, you're looking at it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it, I'm just trying to figure out why they trying to save the pro- a barn on a Moline property.
This is, these are not things that we, that the Airport Authority sought to save, these are things that, um, the historic preservation people said.
Ah.
Had to be saved, so some, some of these things are, you know, it's like the rock pile that was never an Indian burial ground, but, but they said it was.
Okay. It's new.
Or might be, so, um.
If you're good with it, then, I'll take care of it, okay?
Y'all good with it.
Anything else you talking about?
And, uh, let's see.
There was something added to the agenda.
Board of Zoning Appeals is number eight for the agenda this afternoon.
We already talked about it.
Yeah, we're done with that one, all right, uh, do, do I have a motion, motion to adjourn, all right, and if I have a second?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by raising your hand, we're adjourned for thirty minutes.